It's back for another It's in the Ballot Show. Today, these are your candidates and billboards standing for the Hamilton West Award. But with every election, there's always one thing sticking in every candidate's way, and that's your vote. Okay, well, today's It's in the Ballot Show. It seems to be only two candidates are willing to put their feet in the It's in the Ballot of fire. Does it feel like that, Sarah?
So it's me and Dave before me, right?
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I mean, we purposely put a double debate out so that we could cover the potentially excessive number of candidates.
Yeah, because there's a big number. Gosh, I'm trying to think. How many are in the... I know there's 27 in the east, which is huge. Few less in the west, around 13 in the west.
Yeah, yeah, so it's interesting, the whole mix and things in there. Like, we've got Matthew to put in his video substitutes. But we thought some people who said they weren't coming were turning up. So who knows, they might be wanting to turn up and be mayoral candidates and they're not standing for mayor.
They might dash in through the door, who knows?
Who knows, who knows, who knows? So would you like to kick off with an open statement on why you should get that number one vote?
Right. I'm Sarah Thompson. I'm standing for mayor and for the West Ward. I'm standing because I'm invested in the future of our city. I want a city where people thrive. I want a city that is safe, and that means working with our police to create a safer city for everybody. A city where we can build houses, and that means investing in our water infrastructure, in our wastewater, so that we can build homes that we need. Our rates are going up, and it's so important that we keep those increases affordable. And so a top priority for me will be reducing our costs through collaborating with other councils, both in the Waikato and beyond, along with working to bring some of our services back in-house to reduce consultant and contractor costs. And I want to protect our community facilities, which make our city a great place to live. Our libraries, pools, parks, let's make sure those things are not on the chopping block. I'm Sarah, and I'm standing for mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. And let's get off to the front part of box questions. Now, it's no point giving you button cards to fair cards, because...
True.
I mean, you know, will your billboards...
Button on myself.
Yeah, and would your billboards actually answer the questions?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's not like you've got a Sarah Huppets down there doing it.
Oh, that does simplify things quite a lot, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah. And so, yeah, we've had a member, was it, after a small turnout from the first section, I was hopefully there'll be more in there shows the level of difference between some constituents is on a comment that has been posted on there. I think the constituents is not who... Oh, yes, 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 that does seem to sit there and do that, yes. Yeah, amazing what sort of things have come, you know, what some people have commented on it. Thank you for your two cents worth, Luke, one of our online audience members watching.
Hello, Luke.
Yeah, okay, so you've got between box numbers R1 and 28, or Tuitaki and Ruut Koma Wadu. What box number would you like to start off with?
Seven.
Seven, okay, let's see what's on box number seven. And I think we found our other candidate. Okay, we've got Q for Quebec. And sorry that my camera's a bit blurry, I still don't know how the hell that's, why it's doing it. How do you feel about Hamilton City sister relationships?
Hmm, all right, good question. I think that we've got some established relationships, particularly with Chengdu, which is a city in China. And over the last three years, the council's been putting a lot more work into that relationship. And there are some economic opportunities, along with learning opportunities, to learn from how they run their city and do their infrastructure. And also cultural opportunities for, for example, we've recently set up a opportunity for scholarships to go over to China and for students in China to come to WinTech. So there's... I think what's important, though, is that we focus in on the relationships we have, because it costs money to maintain those relationships, and we're better to keep it really focused on one or two cities and get the best benefit out of those, particularly in terms of the economic benefits, rather than spreading ourselves thin.
Okay, what's next box number?
Hmm, 19.
19, oh yes, it's a very oddball, it's a prime number.
Yeah, it's my, my birthday is the 19th of December, so I'm biased.
Hey, that is, yeah, that is very close.
I don't recommend it as a birthday, if you have a choice.
Flatmate who was Christmas Day and then a cousin whose Boxing Day. But yes, yes, I know what you mean, everything's so close. Okay, we've got K for Kitty Kitty Gua. What was the last community event you attended and have you ever helped set one up?
Okay, the last community event I attended was on Sunday. I went to the Hamilton Muslim Youth Organised Event, it was actually at Woodlands, but it's a Hamilton group, and they had an art exhibition there called The Plants of Koran, and it was celebrating beautiful art, botanical art. And also there was just, yeah, food and lots of good company, so it was really fantastic to be there. I, it's been a long time since I have organised a community event. Since I did a lot of that in university, because I ran a club which taught people Mandarin. It was an opportunity to learn Mandarin, and we held lots of cultural events for people to experience Chinese culture. And so, yeah, that's my experience with organising community events.
Sharon, I can, what's the next box number?
Hmm, how about we go 22?
Oh, my birthday.
Well, there we go.
That's all right, that's all right, it's only next month, not far away.
Happy birthday for next month, if I don't see you before then.
Yep, that's a good way of putting it. Well, you could always attend our election results show.
Ah, okay. Hopefully that's a happy day.
It'll be on the Sunday. Okay, we've got A for Alpha. How should council balance keeping rates low with maintaining city assets? And is there an acceptable level of asset loss voters? No, is there an acceptable level of asset loss voters should tolerate?
Hmm, so there have been a number of buildings which have been demolished, and the founders is obviously a very high-profile one, along with the Muni Pools. And I think this council in particular, and I know the last one as well, has put a really big emphasis on maintaining what we have, ensuring that we have enough money in the budget to renew our footpaths, to look after our community houses, to be fixing and repaving our roads before they end up full of potholes. That costs money, and that, and it's not something that residents necessarily see immediately, but they do notice it when we don't do it for a long time. I think there is some, there are some buildings, though, that are particularly old and poorly used in terms of community buildings, and we, we have decided it wasn't economic to fix them. There are things that we have, we have, we have been given by community groups which fell over and weren't able to use the buildings and look after them themselves, and I think those were sensible decisions.
Okay, what's next box number?
Um, two.
Two. Okay, we've got A B for the All Blacks. What are your thoughts on regional amalgamation and the idea of renaming Hamilton to the city of Waikato?
Hmm, okay, so firstly, I think we need to start with shared services, and we're already doing that by having a joint water company with Hamilton City and Waikato District Council. And other councils within the Waikato are joining together to create their own joint public water company. There are so many more opportunities where we can work together, for example, have a joint finance team, a joint planning team, even have a joint planning committee to do our rubbish recycling together, to do our road and maintenance together. And we can create lots of efficiencies while retaining democratic decision-making. I do think in the future, there may be a good reason for us to join together with our neighbours to create a larger area, because growth is happening on the edges of Hamilton, and it's hard to manage when it's right there just outside of the city, but people are using all of our services and roads. So it would make sense for us to create a larger area in the future, shared services as a start.
Okay, what's next box number?
Next box number, that's to 28, was that the last one?
Yes, that is, yeah, Ruut Koma Wadu.
All right.
Okay, we've got N for November. What, oh no, who in the community best exemplifies Waikato's positive attributes and deserves more recognition?
This was the one question that stumped me slightly, because it's hard to just choose one person in the, who best exemplifies the Waikato's positive attributes. There isn't one particular person. What I would say is that as a councillor, we attend so many different events that the community puts on. And what really encourages me and makes me really proud of our city is just the amount of work that people put on, put towards attending events, getting their community out, celebrating their culture and their history and their food and their music and art, and they do that all on a volunteer basis. They, and I just think that's what, is part of what makes our city really special, that people are able to celebrate their own culture and retain that while also being a Hamiltonian. And we have so many different, yeah, people who give huge amounts in our community, so it would be hard to name one of them.
Okay, and what's next box number?
Number one.
Number one. Okay, oh, no, no, I want that one on me, we've got I for India. How would you approach, was it constant central government changes, RMA, density rules, building codes, when making local decisions?
Right, we have been dealing with constant change for the last six years. My colleagues who have been in local government for longer than me will say that this is a period of the most rapid change that they have ever seen, and some of them have been there for 20 to 25 years. So we're already dealing with it, and honestly, it just requires us being really responsive, and at the same time, ensuring that we give feedback to government on the most key things that are important for Hamilton in those changes that they, they put up. For example, when the government came out and said, we want three-by-threes all over the city, our council actually said, well, we can't do that here in Hamilton, because we've got an obligation to look after the Waikato River under Tatarifaimana, and our infrastructure cannot cope with all of that intensification across the whole of the city at once, and we have to prevent wastewater going into the river. So we were successful in ensuring those, that law fitted Hamilton.
So I want to ask a little supplementary on that.
Yeah.
So basically, not building three-by-three close to the river?
Ah, yeah, so not quite. What we, what we've done is essentially said, here are areas around key transport corridors, around suburban shopping centres, where you've got, you know, lots of access to shops, jobs, and schools and things, where we're saying, okay, we want density there. And we want density in our central city, we want density where we're going to have frequent bus routes, but we don't want it all over the city. So what that allows us to do is to target our wastewater infrastructure and drinking water infrastructure to those particular areas where we're enabling intensification. And where we're not enabling intensification, we're saying, actually, you need to have more a pervious surface, so more grass or soil, rather than too much hard surfaces. And you need to plant trees as part of your development, depending on how many dwellings, it will tell you how many trees you have to plant. Your soil has to be like this deep, rather than just a tiny bit of topsoil. All those things contribute to managing stormwater better, and also ensuring that we don't overload our wastewater network across the whole city all at once. Because right now, this is, sorry, this is something I'm very passionate about, right now, when it rains, we have wastewater overflows all over the city, but particularly in the older parts of our city, like around the hospital, where we've seen a lot of intensification. You know, the pipes are aging and older, rainwater gets into them, and then they end up overflowing, so we're putting in giant storage tanks to deal with that. But that takes lots of money and time, so...
Yeah, and is that combination of both stormwater sewage tanks and the combination of, is that mainly stormwater sewage tanks?
Uh, no, mainly, mainly wastewater, yeah. So wastewater is the biggest issue in terms of these overflows, where the rainwater gets into the wastewater network, and then it ends up being too full, and it pops up out of manholes and into gullies. And, yeah, so it's not nice. I've, I've once had a call from someone who actually had wastewater popping out of a manhole in their backyard.
We can all visualize.
So the storage tanks hold the wastewater when it's raining, when the pipes are all too full for it to head off to the treatment plant. And then when it's, you know, the rain clears up and it's safe for it to do so, then it releases that wastewater to carry on to the treatment plant. And so it's a bit of a safety valve there in the, in the middle to stop those overflows.
Sounds a bit like from my petrol station days, the interceptor, for if someone had a fuel spill, you'd have to put on the interceptor, so you don't have it going into the water network. Yeah, yeah, so similar thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, what's the next box number?
Um, let's do six.
Six, okay, we've got V for violin.
You don't want to have another turn, Dave?
I had my hour.
Dave is here as well now in the audience.
I know, I know, isn't it fantastic?
There's the commitment, and he's going to be here for the mural one as well, are you? No, you aren't, okay.
Okay. When was the last time you used public transport or cycle lane in Hamilton?
Okay, I saw this and I was like, oh no, because I've left my bike at the council for a couple of months, locked up at the moment. So I actually usually cycle quite a lot, and that's my main way of getting into work and back, but while we're campaigning, I'm carrying around giant billboards in my Nissan Leaf. So I've been doing a mix of, of walking and, and driving. I live really close to work as well, in Hamilton Central, so usually a walk is actually faster than taking the bus. But I do love our buses, and I'm very passionate about us getting to the point where we have a network of buses that come every 15 minutes, because it makes such a difference. When you turn up and you know within 15 minutes the bus will be there, it's so much less stressful than if you miss it and you're waiting for another 30 minutes. So it's critical that as a growing city, we improve those services.
Okay, and what's the next box number?
21.
Oh, yes, the, what used to be the voting age at one time.
Ah, and now it's 18, so there's still hope for those 16-year-olds.
Oh, yes, yes, my grandma first voted in 1949.
Yeah.
At age 21, but when she worked out that she's never voted under her maiden, and she's only even voted under her married name, she's not married before the election. So that was something which is like nowadays, that's just unusually heard of, because normally you, you don't normally get married before...
No, we're all really slow at that now.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, we've got R for Romeo. Okay, what, what impression would you like first-time visitors to Hamilton to leak with?
Okay, firstly, clean. I want us to do better at looking after our city and not have illegal dumping and weeds, you know, going down the median strips, which are over spring and summer, is really terrible. I would also like to pay people to be able to appreciate our waterfront. So we've got some cool stuff happening at the moment, which will open up our central city to the riverfront, the theatre, and also Embassy Park, which will be amazing. There's a plan for a Templeton development near Victoria on the River, but I do think we need further forethought on how we continue to open up the city to the river. And also, art is important, so for us to have a vibrant city, murals, public art actually plays a really important role. And we recently approved the Art and Infrastructure Policy, which will ensure arts considered in new infrastructure projects. There was an excited cheer from the audience on that one.
Oh, if they could help us write the chequebook out for us in the ballot, we'd love that as well. Okay, what's the next box number?
18.
Oh, yes, the current voting age. Okay, we've got O for Oscar. Can you give an example of your out-of-the-box thinking and how it helped the city?
Ooh, okay, all right, one out-of-the-box idea that I've come up with is how to spot potholes early and fix them. Now, potholes, I know everyone goes on about them, but actually, they're really bad over winter in, in Hamilton. And even when I've gone to the university and high schools, people, the students are saying that this is an important issue for them, so we need to respond. I would like us to use image recognition technology on recycling and rubbish fleet or on our buses, you know, vehicles that already travel the city, to immediately pick up where potholes are forming, so that our team can go and fix them. And what it will avoid is firstly, potholes getting bigger and bigger, because people take forever to report them. But secondly, stopping inefficiencies by fixing one pothole and leaving the other one 50 metres down the road unfixed until someone else reports it, so, yeah.
Now, just want to ask, are you copyrighting that suggestion, or will you allow that to be, or would you allow that if, say, one of your opponents gets in, or say, another candidate standing in another council adopts that idea, would you be open for them also taking that idea?
Absolutely, you know what I love is people taking my ideas and then thinking they're their own, because then I get stuff to happen, and I don't even have to like make it happen. It happens all the time, to be honest, and I love it, because then I'm like, yes, they agree with me, but they don't know it, they think it's their own idea now.
I could certainly say from my 2019 experience of running for Greater Wellington Regional Council, some of the ideas I had later were adopted as immediate changes to the bus network by the time 2022 rolled around.
Yeah.
So it was interesting that, you know, yeah, I put it, the planner, how it took for all the bosses, and, okay, I didn't get on, but I got asked by the current chair, who became the chair at the election, and he goes, your policies, if you want to, if I take them, would you sit down there and sort of go, of course, it's about the users.
That's success, right? That is success, yeah.
And I like your idea, it's like, because that actually makes sense, because usually a rubbish truck or a recycling truck drives down every single street, either every week or every fortnight, depending on where you are in the country. You know, so it's like, you know, that'd be quite cool, and I mean, how much extra does it cost to put that technology on?
I don't think it would be huge, and I know Christchurch, I have been in touch with them, have been trialling that kind of technology down there. I did think of it and then found out they're already doing it, which is awesome. So, yeah, I think there's also a great opportunity to, again, work with other councils to share the cost of any development of technology if it doesn't already exist. Yeah, and I think it would save us money too, because like I said, this is really nerdy of me, but I observe the potholes in my neighbourhood quite closely, and, and I reported some, and they went and they fixed, I said, there's two on the bridge, one on each end, they came and fixed one at one end, but not the other one. So, you know, then they have to come back with more traffic management to fix the other pothole, whereas I think that could have been avoided, so I think you could pay for it with just efficiencies in itself.
Yeah, your traffic management is cheap, what's the next box number?
I'm going to start forgetting which ones I've already said, this is also a test. 25.
25, oh, yes. For those who are wondering, that's the age of car insurance drop, not car insurance, car insurance access. Okay, we've got W for whisky, no, no, for Waikato.
Was that an inappropriate election reference?
Oh, no, 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 whisky is the phonetic alphabet W.
Ah, I see.
Yeah, 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 like Q for Quebec, W is whisky, not, not Winston Peters, considering I think he likes his whisky. Do you support increasing the number of wheelchair-accessible bus stops?
Yes, 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 and we have been doing that already, we've been, as a councillor over the last six years, I don't actually have the number, but we have upgraded lots of our bus stops to both improve shelters, but also put an accessible curb, so the bus can come right up against a curb and kneel down and then be able to put the ramp down at the right gradient. Now, what's really cool is that actually, what we call the Kirsty curb, the design for the accessible bus curb was designed by one of Hamilton City Council's own engineers, and it's designed in order to stop damage happening to the buses, to the buses when they come in against the curb, so it's designed in a particular way to be the right height while avoiding damage to buses.
Oh, hopefully those grass burns don't get filled in with some concrete, making it more, more bus stops accessible.
Yeah, yeah.
So what's the next box number?
Let's go 24.
24, oh yes, the age where you no longer need to have your parents' income for the sh... Twenty-four. Oh, yes, the age where you no longer need to have your parents' income for the student allowance.
That is, you have some very good trivia on ages right there.
I've gotta try and make sure it's G-rated, because you never know, children could end up watching this. Okay, we've got Z for Sulu. What are your thoughts on the Hamilton Garden visitor fee now that it's been in place for a while?
Uh, it was a good idea. Honestly, um, Andrew King raised it as an idea and people didn't like it. Um, it was, it got some backlash. But what we did was we proposed that we charge for parking at the gardens last term, and that was even less popular. So we ended up turning around and saying we'll charge entry to the gardens. Um, and, yeah, it hasn't, we haven't seen the drop-off in visitors. We thought we might have. And we also are receiving uh, really significant income from it. And the gardens, um, cost around six million dollars a year to maintain. So, you know, having a million or so dollars come in, actually, I can't remember the figure, two million, two, three, there we go, three million, come in to help with that maintenance is excellent. It just keeps on going up. So, and and you know what? The gardens are really special and I think, um, it puts a value, a bit more value on the gardens for visitors too.
What is the user charge?
Twenty dollars for people outside of Hamilton, but you can get an annual pass as well, um, which I think is the cost of two and a half visits, yeah.
Oh, so so if you live in Cambridge, um, you you get your classes in out-of-town?
Yes, yeah. Are you from Cambridge?
No, 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 no. But that's like, you you leave Cambridge and you go for it.
Yeah, yeah.
It it just is a great example of, I mean, hey, I'm on a spot for Wellington, but Cambridge is your neighbour.
Yeah.
Whereas like, you know, I mean, put it this way, I've got a lovely pass here that gives me half price to the zoo. So I've got that there to Wellington Zoo. But obviously, it's because by my landlord, we pay rates in Wellington. But I shouldn't get that same pass in Hamilton because my rent, I my rent that pays the rates, I'm paying for Hamilton's infrastructure, I'm paying for Wellington's.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, Hamiltonians have paid rates towards the gardens for a long time. So it makes sense that they have that free access. Um, we had a lot of debate around how we dealt with access for people that are close by in the Waikato and Waipar. Um, and we decided it would be fear that they they just paid the visitor charge, uh, the majority of us, because there is an annual pass that you can buy, which makes it considerably cheaper if you can, um, be coming back and forth. Um, yeah, so it's, I think that we did go to their councils though and say, hey, look, if you would like to do what we've done with the libraries, which is, you know, um, Waikato pays an annual fee to us, and then their close-by residents can use Hamilton City Council libraries for free. Um, we would have been happy to come to that arrangement and still open to them. They could pay a certain amount per year to Hamilton City for their residents to come and go, um, free, just as Hamilton residents do.
Yeah. Okay, what's the next box number?
Let's do twelve.
Okay, we've got X for X-ray. What could councils do to either revive the CBD or change your perception that CBD is dying?
Hmm. Okay, the CBD is not dying because we have huge amount of private investment going into the central city with the Pullman Hotel. And we've got the Templeton Development, which will be, um, apartments and hotel on the riverfront. There's huge amount of investment going into Union Square, which is a big office block development. And also around the theatre as well, there'll be, uh, you know, new commercial development there too. I think that bringing people in through events is really important because we want to give, uh, the city vibrancy, um, give people a reason to come in. So that is one big thing that we can do. And I have actually proposed that we ring fence any revenue from parking to go towards a fund for the central city, guided by the businesses to decide on how they spend that money, well, how we spend that money to make improvements in our central city, to create a better environment and also do things like more events.
Okay, and what's the next box number?
Next box number is, have we done ten yet? We haven't.
We haven't.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got F for Foxtrot. Do you, what are your views on lobby groups' involvement in local politics, e.g. the taxpayers' union, Greenpeace?
Hmm. I think it's, um, you know, it is important that people have freedom of speech and the ability to lobby and advocate for things. So what I have disagreed with though is, for example, the taxpayers' union, did push very hard to throw out Three Waters, um, and the government's proposal around having water entities set up, uh, which would have taken some of that cost away from councils on investing in water infrastructure and reduce the cost of water infrastructure for residents. But now they've come and, uh, now that Three Waters is is gone and got something else, they're coming in to say, um, that we need rates caps and that councils are spending too much. And a big reason why, you know, our rates have gone up is needing to invest in water infrastructure. So, um, you know, I think it's, yeah, that's been a bit frustrating.
Here's a cheeky supplementary. What do you, do you believe rates cap should be based on the price increase of vegan butter, which has barely moved in the last twelve months?
The price increase of bread and butter?
No, no, vegan butter.
Oh, vegan butter.
You know how the price of of butter has just gone stupid in the last twelve months? But the price of vegan butter has barely moved by about fifty cents a tub.
Right. Well.
If, you know, with the taxpayers' union, but what do you think? Is that a good measure?
Is that a good measure? I think, okay, if a rates cap was introduced, there's lots of, uh, there's lots of, um, issues that arise with it potentially. So, uh, we don't want councils not investing and looking after their assets, looking after the roads and community buildings and things. So, uh, we can't put the squeeze on councils to the point where they're not looking after the infrastructure. But also, we're playing catch-up on our water infrastructure. We are, we have to actually spend more than, um, just, you know, what you could if you pegged rates to inflation, because there's been such a lack of investment over the last few decades. So I think it's, um, you just have to be really careful around the rates caps, that if it's introduced, it's done in a really sensible way that takes into account those kinds of things. Yeah.
And possibly not the price of.
No, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't fix it on the price of vegan butter.
It's quite, quite a good one to sit there and put it to, because it would stir up those who go, well, I ain't from an animal, that's right. And it was something like that. And it's like, literally, it's like, because some people sit there and like, up until probably say a couple of years ago, the vegan products used to actually be more. But I've started noticing both vegan grated cheese and vegan butter, some version of cow's milk, is actually cheaper per kg than the than the milk-o-turden.
That's so interesting. Because, yeah, for a long time, it has been at a premium, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the premium hasn't quite skyrocketed up in the same way. Uh, so what's the next box number?
Have we done nine yet?
No, we haven't. Okay, we've got Y for, no, I don't think how our American candidate liaison is is watching. For Yankee, because that's what the phonetic alphabet says. How can Hamilton retain skilled graduates from local tertiary institutions rather than losing them elsewhere?
All right, there's a few things we can do as a council, noting, you know, our scope as a council is always going to be somewhat limited to what our role is. Firstly, supporting our local economy through, uh, ensuring we've got enough industrial and commercial land. That's something I've been working on as Chair of, um, Strategic Growth, because that industrial land is where all of our manufacturing happens. And I think that is really important. We want a diverse economy where we make our own stuff. And also, we've been supporting the tech sector through Tech and the Tron to encourage people to come work here in Hamilton, the tech sector, and that's really growing at the moment. Um, along with that, I would like us to see a real big focus on procurement and making sure when council spends money, it spends locally and that money stays within our local economy. Uh, we need to measure where our money goes when we spend, um, on infrastructure and services so that we can continue to improve in its space.
Okay, what's the next box number?
Eight.
Eight. Okay, we've got U for uniform. Is Hamilton big enough to support a ferry, river ferry service as a transport option?
So we did have a ferry service for a while and, uh, it was used, for example, to take people to the field days. Um, and that was very popular because it's absolutely horrendous going and driving to the field days. I think, um, it is important that we have options and it's certainly something we shouldn't rule out. We would need to subsidize it like we do with other public transport. And getting people down to the river, um, is, can be tricky since our river has very steep banks and things. So, um, we'd have to ensure there was the right facilities. But, yeah, it's not something to rule out because it's a great way of people avoiding congestion and going from, say, the north of the city uh, over into the central city without having to clog up our roads.
And I was gonna say, could there also be part of that, say, an arrangement with Waikato Regional Council that possibly you could say have it start halfway along the river, say, hopefully to, say, the field days or something?
Yeah, and that's the kind of joined-up thinking we do need. It's part of the reason why we have future-proof. Um, we are, Hamilton, Waikato District Council, Waipar District Council, and Mata Mata Piako and the Regional Council all join together to do planning together. And, uh, you know, part of that is planning for transport. So certainly, we've got to make sure that we don't just stop things at an artificial boundary because people do not live in that way.
Yeah, yeah. You are so right, considering, um, if you come from Cambridge, you cross, uh, what's it? Uh, you cross free territorial boundaries as you drive along.
Yeah, yeah.
And and they're like, and most people wouldn't even know about the little section of Waikato District Council between Hamilton and Cambridge.
Yeah, and it's, yes, Hamilton, um, actually, Waikato District Council wraps around two-thirds of Hamilton approximately. So we're very connected. Uh, and we've got, like I said, housing development happening all around Hamilton that's technically in Waikato District. But those people will be doing everything, going to school, going to jobs, all in Hamilton. So we have to plan together.
Yeah. Okay, uh, what's the next box number?
Five.
Five. Okay, we've got D for Delta. How should candidates counter disinformation spread during local body elections?
This is really tough because, to be honest, uh, there's so much that swirls around everywhere on social media. It's quite hard to keep on top of all of it as a candidate because you've got to also focus on your own campaign. And, um, I think at candidate events, we can and should, where we can, correct information. But unfortunately, we don't often get the opportunity to actually reply and have rebuttal. So it would have been good having the rebuttal card here. Um, and on social media, um, for example, I put out a post to say, um, there's a myth going around that a third of the council's rates go on paying interest, which is completely incorrect. Um, so there's, and there are other things as well where you have to pick up, uh, other candidates and what they're saying. So there's some role for candidates. But it is honestly really difficult to combat all of the misinformation that goes around.
That's interesting about the so-called amount spent on interest.
Hmm, yeah. So it's actually, um, so that's actually been a real issue in this campaign is there's candidates saying we spend sixty-two point five million dollars on interest. We spent that in the last year. Actually, the net interest, uh, that we paid was forty point nine million. And candidates are picking numbers that kind of suit them. Um, so that, that sixty-two point four million, um, that includes interest for Peacock, uh, where we had an interest-free loan from the government for some of the infrastructure. And it accounts for the fair value of that interest. But we never paid that interest. So that's about seven point eight million that we never actually paid. But it's just accounting, uh, that kind of adds it in there. And then we've got, um, we re- we received over thirteen million in interest revenue because the way that we borrow money, we draw down, say, a hundred million and then it will sit it in a bank account and it will, um, receive interest while it's sitting there. And the interest it receives is higher than what we're paying because, uh, borrowing rates are quite low with the local government funding authorities. So, um, you can't look at it in isolation and just say, you you have to look at it with, um, at that net figure. But, yeah, so things like that are quite frustrating.
So you could be sitting there putting it into a term deposit and getting four and a half, five percent or something potentially on the term deposit while it's allocated and waiting to be spent.
Yeah, so you, yes, yeah. And our staff manage that all quite deliberately to ensure that we reduce our overall interest costs as much as possible. So it's, um, our, uh, Chief Finance Officer will say you need to look at these together, your interest, um, that you've paid along with your interest revenue.
Oh, it sounds like, um, Chief Financial Officer will be listening to the OCR announcements.
Oh, yeah.
I I do the same thing as the Treasurer of the Newtown Residents Association because, um, in the last couple of years, we've actually had good interest income on a term deposit because interest rates were higher.
Yeah.
And now we're a little bit, oh, I don't quite like to say that because that's brought us out of a lot of cash deficits is the interest.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what's the next box number?
Four.
Four. Okay, we've got M for Mike. One back. Who is your favourite local artist, visual, music, film writing, et cetera, and why?
So I'm gonna say Paul Barlow. Paul, if you're watching, hello. He did the mural that's, um, on the bathrooms at the Transport Centre and I love it. It's sort of two people hugging and it really reflects what, you know, travel and transport means, which is connecting people with other people. And he's just a cool person as well.
Uh, I'm not sure if everyone universally thinks that, but it is cross.
But Paul, Paul, sorry, Paul, um, Bradley.
Oh, sorry, wrong person.
I said, I said the wrong person, sorry.
I think you said Paul Barlow.
No, I think I did, sorry, Paul Bradley. Paulie, Paulie B. Yeah, I did, because goodness, that's confusing. It's both Paul Bs. Paulie B., Paul, Paul Bradley. Yeah.
I think it's come from our remote editor. She's thinking Paul Brinsley.
Right, Paul Brin- no. You know what, I, how about we pause for a moment and?
Won't be pausing live, but we we can listen to a Google search to find out who that is.
Paul Bradley, yes.
Uh, yeah, yeah, she'll be right. That's all right.
It's been a long election campaign, so.
Oh, I know the feeling, I know the feeling. Uh, what's the next box number?
Three.
Okay, now, we can actually do that here. Only just, E for the East Coast Main Train Line. I'm a railway nerd. What are your views on political party involvement in local body politics?
I personally like the fact that Hamilton is largely, um, largely doesn't have strong party political involvement at a local level. I think candidates often will have their parties they're affiliated with, but they're runners-in dependents. And what that does is ensure that when people get into council, firstly, they're not beholden to, um, any particular, um, policies so that they're, but also that they're in a better position to work with and collaborate with. to work with and collaborate with other people. Because when people do run on tickets, which is not a bad thing, what can happen is that you end up very early on with fractions within a council. And it's really important that we all work together as much as possible on issues and try and find that common ground and avoid becoming divided. So, I think that avoiding some of those divisions early on can help.
Okay, and what's the next box number?
One, this really is starting to test me.
Sorry, it'll test me as well. Okay, that's the one I want. So, we've got T for Tango. How do you weigh up the need of car commuters versus those who use buses, bikes or walking when signing on infrastructure changes?
It's really hard to retrofit an existing city. It's so much easier when you're building a new suburb to put in all the cycle lanes, to put in the bus lanes like we have in Peacock from the start. But we don't have that luxury. It's a case of really trying to work with the community to find solutions that they can support. So, for example, in lane bus stops have been very unpopular, extremely unpopular. And so, we've heard that and have stopped putting those in. But that doesn't stop us from, you know, really focusing in on improving our bus shelters, our accessible curbs and planning for actual bus lanes, which I think with our very fast-growing population will eventually be needed. Similarly, you know, we're putting in level pedestrian crossings with lights now instead of the raised ones to respond to community feedback too.
Actually, had an interesting experience today with the one just across the road. Person in electric wheelchair across the road, something looked right, yeah, right. It's like, oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, no problem. But could you help move my leg? It's come off one of the plates of the rest. So, literally on the side road, helped her actually get her leg back to where it should be. She guided me exactly well. It's like, you just tell me what to do, where and we'll make it work. And we got it back there. But it was literally a bump that knocked her leg off and it was getting that back into the right place. And she said if I wasn't there, it would have been who knows when before it actually got back to the correct spot. But if you didn't dip with the curb, that wouldn't have happened and it would have been a quicker cross.
Yeah, and there's been really good rationale behind, you know, a lot of the raised platforms slows people down before they get to a crossing so that if there is a collision, it's going to cause less damage to the person crossing. It also does ensure that people on wheelchairs can cross smoothly without going up and down the dips where you meet, the footpath meets the road. I think we can still achieve some of that through smoother crossings that are somewhat raised but without the kind of bump in them where you've got a much smoother gradient. There's ways that we can make it work. But some of our infrastructure, you know, legacy infrastructure is really inaccessible and there's a lot of work to be done in that space.
And are you probably glad State Highway One no longer runs down Victoria Street? Now, that's really gonna show age considering, how long is it? Well, it's now one C.
Yeah.
But thank goodness that is no, you're no longer having the trucks literally going through the CBD.
Yeah, that's, absolutely, gosh. I don't think drinking your coffee and breathing in truck fumes would be that pleasant.
Sixty to forty-four tonne truck going by.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the next box number?
Three?
Uh, where are we done?
Oh, no. Do let's do a two, oh, I was doing so well.
Okay, we've got P for Papa. Okay, should councils take public stances on national or international issues?
I think it's dependent. For example, lots of councils took a stance around climate change, which is an international and national issue, but also a very local one where councils deal actually with some of the brunt of climate change, particularly in terms of adaptation. So, there's a very clear link to what council does in regard to climate change. Then our council, for example, passed a resolution talking about our desire to see peace in regard to the conflict in, well, yeah, the conflict with Israel and Palestine. And that was because we had a lot of people within our community ask for that. So, where there's a strong community voice asking for our council to do something, I think that can be appropriate too. But we have to be careful as well because ultimately, we're not experts in these different areas necessarily. And also, there are so many issues that we could, you know, have a say on and we do have to focus in on what we can actually influence.
Okay, and what's the next box number? She's doing well.
Thank you, okay. Have we done six?
No, we haven't.
All right.
Okay, we've got B for Bravo. What new revenue streams could the council consider to reduce pressure on rate payers?
This is a really tough one. There's not really any magical revenue stream. It's talked about a lot as we need more revenue streams, but no one has really any excellent ideas because ultimately, everyone has to pay for something. And so, you know, congestion charging and road tolling are often raised. Well, they're not particularly popular and there are other issues that come along with doing that. So, we could, for example, and I think it's likely, you know, the new Southern Links Expressway would probably have tolling as part of it to pay for it. But I don't see us in any time in the near future, for example, having congestion charging in Hamilton. We have introduced the paid entry to the gardens. We've introduced paid parking in the central city. Again, people don't love that necessarily. So, all of those things are not easy.
Well, I do like the fact that if you use Pay My Park, I get the first hour free.
Yes.
And I mean, yeah, I put it this way, I only have that in Wellington because the parking is horrendous.
Yeah, yeah.
And but it's useful that, you know, Hamilton has chosen to use Pay My Park. And the fact is, if you go in there, the first hour is free if you use Pay My Park.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And it's, yeah, I mean, most, most central cities, people now pay for parking as well.
So, it's... Sorry, but we've been able to introduce paid parking because to me, that feels like total, you know, did it when I was a kid, I lived in the 30s now.
We had paid parking and then two hour free was introduced. And then we reduced it to one hour. And part of that was actually to try and find other ways of having revenue come in other than rates with those big rates increases. Yeah, there's, I mean, there's also the need for central government to actually share some revenue. For example, it could be the GST on new homes built, could be some other form of GST sharing or just stop charging GST on rates. Because we're like the poor cousin and yet they're collecting revenue from us. As, you know, and it's adding to our residents' rates bills.
Now, you may have not seen this, but Tony Boynton phrased it as the, what do you call it? The government is the deadbeat father not paying the child support to the solo mother being the local councils.
Yeah.
So, that's how Tony Boynton has phrased that. And she'll be basing that base, well, I hope her, the father of her children wasn't like that, but she was basing part of that on her own experience.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a challenge that lots of councils around the world seem to face. Because we are ultimately created by government and they've got the power in terms of creating opportunities for us to have revenue or not. And once you're in central government, do you get any votes out of, you know, providing more funding to local government or giving us more decision-making powers? Like, so it's a hard one to get change on as a council.
Oh, especially when you get slapped with that naughty stick.
Yes.
Yes, you know, especially when Watson made that statement to Tarkeena talking about it's a white elephant. That was ironically done under two measures, that long-term plans.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, not every decision made by councils around the country has been a good one, right? But then not every decision made by central government has been a good one either. And you can see wastage in both central and local government. And a lot of that wastage comes from people flip-flopping between one direction and another, changing policy, having funding for a transport project and then the next government pulling it. And so, all of that money that's gone into planning things and designing them then gets wasted and it sits there collecting dust. So, it's a big frustration and actually, as a country, we have to move away from this constant pendulum when it comes to infrastructure. Because it's extremely expensive for us as a country.
Okay, shall we get on to some of the hard-hitting questions?
All right.
And hard-hitting questions are the questions that we ask all candidates, or in this case, candidate and two billboards, on what should be there, what are the burning issues in the community? So, let's get on to hard-hitting question number one. What are your views on the new emergency management bill before government?
From what I can see, a core part of that bill is actually involving the community more in emergency management and ensuring Maori have a strong role within that. Because we saw within, you know, what happened in Auckland and Hawke's Bay that Marae became places of refuge and that local Iwi had really important roles in emergency response management. So, that really makes sense because ultimately, you need a whole community to respond when disaster strikes. And ensuring that we are modernising the bill is important because we are going to see more, more extreme weather with climate change more frequently. And we must be prepared. And our council has actually put additional funding into civil response, including funding for a generator at the Claudons Event Centre to ensure we've got a facility with power on the east of the river.
Oh, I remember that from my VP days. We were the petrol station town that had the backup generator. Always a lot of fun.
Yeah, well, you know, with bridges, if anything happened to the bridges, you have to make sure that you have somewhere on either side of the river for people to gather if there is an emergency.
Okay, let's get on to hard-hitting question number two. And this was partly brought in by my friend Tony. When you have, when Tony provides your accommodation to make it's in the ballot happen in Hamilton, there are some strings attached. Currently, new housing subdivisions are not required to make housing accessible to the front door for disabled users such as wheelchairs. What is your policy stance on making new subdivisions have accessible requirements so a wheelchair user can get to the front door?
As long as we've got the right policy levers available to us as a council to require that, then absolutely it makes absolute sense to do that. We have, we have limited ability, for example, in terms of the building code, where we can't require homes to be accessible. But what we have managed to do is with Plan Change Twelve, ensure that where developments have ten units or more, that a portion of those are universally designed and accessible. And we also made it a requirement for anyone wanting the discount on development contributions in the central city that they first had to show that their buildings would be universally designed. So, where we have got levers, we've been using them and I would be absolutely keen to look into how we could make that happen. At the very least, give very strong guidance to developers to ensure there's that accessibility if we can't force it.
And this is something that Tony brought up is going around. He actually asked the developer, what cost difference does it make to make the house have accessible to the front door? And from the developer was, there was no cost difference between making it, that it had a path that was accessible to the front door or a path that had a breakover step.
Yeah, yeah.
Like that very, like, there was no cost difference. But he says it's frustrating that he's the only one with an accessible house in his housing subdivision in, was it Back of Chartwell? So, which is quite concerning because it's like, well, how do other disabled people come in?
Yeah.
If that was never designed to potentially have that in there? I mean, it's accessible, bus stop in there now.
Yeah, we have a severe lack of accessible housing. And we do need central government intervention on this because as I said, as councils, we're not allowed to require stuff above and beyond the building code. But in the case of Plan Change, it was, became like a design element actually. So, yeah, we'd have to look at what further things we could do. And even Kāingora, you know, we've pushed for them to increase the amount of housing that they make that is accessible to ensure that there's options for people, yeah.
Okay, and let's get on to hard-hitting question number three. What is your position on retaining Hamilton City Council's Kiri Kiri Rua Maori Ward and the Waikato Regional Council's Ne Taiki Uto Maori constituency? And why do you hold that position?
Yeah, I support Maori wards. I've supported the establishment of Maori wards here in Hamilton, Kiri Kiri Rua. And I think firstly, as councils, we have a responsibility under the Local Government Act to take into account the principles of the treaty and also to enable participation in decision-making for Maori. And so, Maori wards are a really meaningful way of doing that. And after having Maori wards for three years, I think it would be a real shame to lose them because our Maori councillors, Maori ward councillors have provided huge value in the knowledge that they bring, the experience they bring and the relationships they bring to council. And I, yeah, it adds a lot of value to decision-making.
Okay, I think it's that time of the show where you can do a closing statement of why you should be getting that number one vote.
All right, thank you very much for those of you who have stuck around and listened to my answers. I am someone who is focused on solutions. I have a track record of working with other people to collaborate, bring ideas to the table and then to turn those ideas into action. I'm thoughtful, I'm approachable, I'm friendly as well. But I'm also a strategic thinker and someone who is focused on the long-term view for our city to ensure that we're not making short-sighted decisions, that we invest in the infrastructure we need for our city to thrive and to grow and to enable housing and our businesses and people to do well. I'm Sarah, Sarah Thompson, standing for the West Ward and for the Merit. And I would love to have your support. Thanks. Kia ora.
And for those who are wondering when it does come to voting, if Sarah does win the Merit, please make sure when you also get in your voting papers, you write other candidates below that so that if, if you have a situation that one of your ward, uh, ward council candidates won the Merit, your vote redistributes to your next preferences. Joys of STV.
Yes, I am forgetting, this is for the West Ward, so I shouldn't have mentioned both. That's all right, you're right, yes. Definitely put in a vote for both.
Both, yeah. Okay, well, we'll be back here at Simpim for the Hamilton City Council Merit Debate, where we have quite a full house. We'll see you then. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.